In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meetings and agendas were posted and furnished to all news media and persons requesting notification. Executive session, a public body may hold a meeting closest public for one more of the following reasons: 1) Discussion of negotiations, incident, proposed contract agreements, and proposed purchase or sale of property, and received legal advice, where the legal advice relating to opinions, threats, and potential claim or other matters covered by attorney-client privilege, so on, and legal claims for the position of a public agency in other adversary situations involving assertion against agency or claims; professional services, Pratt &amp; Moore, Librarian, Disciples, Red Spat Building, No. 1; and item 5, discussion of matters, proposed location, expansion of division of services, encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by a public body, Jasper Ocean Terminal. We need a motion to go into executive session.
We need a motion, then we go into executive session.
If you're in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries, and we go into executive session. Have a motion, we come out of the executive session?
So moved.
Second. If you're in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any motions as a result of executive session?
I would like to, Chair.
Yes, sir.
We'd like to move to authorize the administrator to enter into a contract to perform a hazardous material survey of the potential abatement plan, should hazardous material be found and it build an envelope structural inspection, if the hazardous material were not to exceed 6,000, this building envelope structural work not to exceed 14,000.
We have a motion, and we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? If you're in no, in all, in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. At this time, we'll have our pledge of allegiance, followed by an invocation by Pastor Atkins.
I pledge allegiance to the July of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, a one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One more school erects God, he come before you one more time, humble as we know how. And Father God, we thank you for your presence, Father God, Father God, we thank you for deeds to your people. And Father God, as we come into this meeting, Father God, Father God, we actually give us more wisdom, knowledge, and understanding as we go forth. And Father God, let everyone govern himself according, Father God. And Father God, we ask you, when we leave this place, Father God, we have to travel in mercy to go back to our home, Father God, and we ask you to bless each and every one in Jesus' name, that everybody see you back.
Amen.
Amen.
I'd like to welcome everyone this evening to our county council meeting. It's good to see you room full, so welcome, and thank you for participating. At this time, do we have any discussion on our agenda items?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to remove number item 16 of the agenda, and placing on the agenda at line eight.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If you're in no, in all, in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. So we have approval of our agenda, and we have proclamations, and through this proclamation, we will be recognizing National Correctional Officers Appreciation Week, and I'd like to invite council to join me down front. We have our director, Mr. Benjamin, Arthur Benjamin, with us this afternoon, so if y'all will join me downstairs, and we'll present this proclamation. We have a proclamation, whereas in 1984, President Ronald Reagan issued proclamation 5187, National Correctional Officers Week, and formally recognized the corrections profession and difficult, and at times dangerous nature of corrections work, and whereas correctional officers and employees teach, train, mentor council, and treat inmates, and provide inmates with direction, hope, and new focus while assisting with reentry in life outside corrections, and whereas selfless concern and encourage to endure whatever ordeal they face or commonly held values among our correctional officers and employees, and whereas the Jasper County Jail originally opened in the town of Bridle in 1915, and whereas the current Jasper County Detention Center opened in the town of Bridle in 2005, and whereas the Jasper County Detention Center's mission is to be fair, firm, and consistent, in exemplified efforts to provide care, custody, and control under the superb leadership of Detention Center Director Arthur S. Benjamin Jr. since 2000, and whereas the Jasper County Detention Center employs 41 correctional officer positions and five civilian staff members, or a total of 46 Jasper County employees, now therefore vehicles all to proclaim that the Jasper County Council encourages people in our community to join in recognizing and sharing our appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service provided by correctional officers and employees, especially during the week of May 7th through May 13th, 2023, for National Correctional Officers and Employees Appreciation Week. But Mr. Benjamin, on behalf of the county council and all of our citizens, we want to thank you, and certainly your team, for what y'all do to rescue lives on a daily basis, to protect and serve, and the job that y'all do as correctional officers is greatly appreciated, and it does not go unrecognized. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, can you introduce yourself?
First, I'd like to give our Director Harry York. I have my senior vice minister, Assistant, Mr. Jackson Oliver. I have my Captain Beverly York. My Sergeant Andrew, Mr. Sergeant LaBretta Moore. My Staff Sergeant, Herb Wilson. And the team leader, Nicole Walsh. And with them, they make this job very easy for me, because this is a rough situation, but we make the best to keep communities safe, as well as facilities, and I give them a special, wonderful job.
Keep close.
Like you like, sir.
Thank y'all very much. I think we have a couple of extra seats, those of you standing in the back would like to have one, we've got some extra seats up front. May I have a used to sit up front? Am I coming to sit in there as well? Okay. All right, next, we have our Broad River Task Force update and recommendations from Jasper County citizen, Mr. Smitty Kula. Welcome, Mr. Smitty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of council, staff, I'm appearing before you this evening on behalf of the local citizens group, which stems from the Broad River Task Force. We feel strongly that the onslaught of overdevelopment we are facing in diminishing our quality of life, threatening the area's significant natural resources, historic and cultural heritage, and rural character. But I'm not here to rehash about how we feel about all these issues. We know you're well aware of these problems, and the consequences of overdevelopment, and we know that for quite some times, you've listened to public concern, such as increased traffic and public safety, threats to our vulnerable estuaries, and the imminent issues around increasing property valuation and taxes. We also know that you have serious concerns of your own. We appreciate your efforts in this regard, and do not take that for granted. As you know, we have also spent a great deal of time the last several months proactively identifying these problems, listening to our neighbors from across the area, holding community meetings, searching for solutions from a variety of sources, and actively pushing backs against high-density development attempts which would threaten the area. We also know that dealing with these issues is urgent, and time is of the essence. It is our intent to support the council and staff in any way possible to work towards solving these problems, and establishing a solid framework for the future. We want the vision of the Jasper County Comprehensive Plan to be fully realized and actively perpetuated. In the face of this seemingly unrivaled growth and sprawl, council has a unique opportunity to take action, and create a new vision for Jasper County through a reassessment of 2007 Comprehensive Zoning Plan, and to further enhance a 2018 Comprehensive Master Plan. As a part of this process, council should provide staff with the best tools and resources available to properly vet development proposals and assess upzoning requests. The staff is just overwhelmed. Council should pump the brakes on large developer proposals and upzoning requests to allow for a period of study and reassessment, discourage shopping by developers to municipalities, reevaluate zoning designations as buy right is too high and inconsistent, and develop a regional growth plan in concert with the municipalities to guide growth. If I could direct your attention to the maps in your handout, in a little while, I'll come back to it, and I'll tell you when we start in just a minute. We have spent a considerable amount of time and research identifying this particular area. It's particularly sensitive, the valuable portion of Jasper County and the Broad River Basin. It is a unique combination of irreplaceable environmental, historic, and rural assets, and as such, it should be protected and enhanced through a cultural protection overlay designation, creating the U-Haw Broad River Cultural Heritage District. In addition, the Oakody Club region should be established as a rural connectivity buffer. Now let's delve further into the value proposition of the proposed U-Haw Broad River Cultural Heritage District. As I stated earlier, this area possesses a unique combination of a rich historical legacy, a large pristine array of tidal creeks and woodlands, as well as all of the essentials of a rural coastal community. It is home, as you know, to a wide variety of marine life and wildlife. Its natural resources support related commercial and recreational businesses that are vital to our economy. Here is the proposed district, from Chelsea to Cusahatchie, from Broad River to Granville, with the Cusaw City Highway running right down the middle. A casual drive through this district quickly uncovers the vast natural resources and its rural makeup. Now let's begin to move across the area with several birds' eye view. When it comes to the rich historical legacy of the district, however, much of it is not in plain sight. Most of us are probably aware of the native people who once lived here, such as the U-Haws, Cusaws, and the Oakody, or Thomas Hayward's memorial at Old House, or the Battle of Money Hill. But there's much more to the story of this U-Haw section. You may not have known that next to the present Zion Oak Road Baptist Church, just a few miles north of Old House, stood the first U-Haw Baptist Church sanctuary. A large structure was held over 1,000 people. It was frequented and reconstituted in 1752 by Evangelist George Whitfield, the famed leader of the Great Awakening. Or that historians have called this U-Haw section the most ardently patriotic neighborhood in the Beaufort District on the eve of the American Revolution, led by such great patriots as Daniel de Sisour and Thomas Hayward. You also may be surprised to learn that Strawberry Hill was a home and the resting place of Captain John Graham, founder of Granville. It was also the home later of Annabelle South Carolina Governor Whitmore Seabrook. It's also interesting to point out that Ticton Hall was owned for some years during reconstruction by Vincent Scott, an African-American man who served as a Beaufort County Commissioner during the administration of Robert Smalls. And then there's Cherry Hill, a community that was established by African-Americans who were left behind after the Civil War and the raids of Sherman's Army. These remaining residents got together and purchased most of what we now call Cherry Hill. Over the years, much of the land was passed to family heirs, and is still predominantly owned by descendants. Now, a few months ago, our group began a cultural survey of the U-Haw district. As a part of that survey, we asked folks to submit photos they thought illustrated the value and special nature of the area. This is just a sample of the hundreds of photos submitted. I'll let them speak for themselves. Council, tonight, we are pressing that you direct the staff to craft a plan of action to be presented at your next meeting on May 15th. This plan will create the best tools possible for evaluating developer proposals and zoning change requests. Furthermore, it will establish a cultural protection overlay district, which is encompassed by the boundaries presented to you on the map entitled U-Haw Broad River Cultural Heritage District. And lastly, it will temporarily pump the brakes on high-density development proposals and upzoning requests to allow for a proper study period. In addition, make an effort to discourage municipal colonization during this study period. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kula. We do appreciate you and everybody. You know, something that I'm proud of is that when you were showing all the waterways, I could pick those out without even having to name them, or through some of them just over the weekend, but growing up here, and seeing that, recognizing the places there is really special. I know it's special to everybody up here, only council is obviously, as well as everybody in attendance tonight. But I know that I can speak on behalf of the council with everybody up here sharing those same concerns, and we're going to take action to do just what you suggested. And Vice Chairman Clark has got a motion machine fixing to read, but I just want everybody to know that this council is committed to preserving what's ours. So without any further ado, or any comment...
I just want to say thank you all for the work that you're doing, and we have to trust the employees somewhere down the line to bring us the report, because we are now out there and have, we are really, really, really concerned. We would go out there and look at the phrase before we get on this bench, and we would have our answers. That's one of my pet peeves. I don't like that.
I've seen you say, my numbers over there.
Madam, councilman?
Yes, sir.
I'm only asking these questions because other people want to answer. I went after, I saw.
Right on my path.
So please don't, if we're doing that.
Any other questions, councilmen? Okay, it is time we call for a, do we have a motion? I've got a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we have Ms. Lisa Wagner, discussion and consideration of first reading to amend the official zoning map of Jasper County, so as to transfer it properly located at three twenty-three School Road, bearing Jasper County tax map number zero one five dash zero one dash zero zero, that's zero one two, from the residential zone to the community commercial zone of Jasper County official zoning map. Ms. Lisa Wagner.
Good evening, chairman and councilmembers. The applicant requests a zoning map amendment to have the property designated as community commercial. The subject property consists of point seven-four acres and is located at three twenty-three School Road in the Robertville Community. The subject property is currently zoned residential and has a commercial building located on the property. The applicant would like to have the property rezoned as community commercial so that the building can be used as a community event center. According to the two thousand eighteen Jasper County Comprehensive Plan, the future land use map identifies this area as a hamlet. Hamlets serve as commercial centers for everyday needs in rural areas. Small-scale commercials should be allowed within these hamlets with proper design. Adjacent parcels are zoned residential and community commercial with rural preservation nearby. Adjacent land uses are commercial, residential, and vacant property. The subject property is accessed by School Road, which is a county-maintained dirt road. Planning Commission reviewed this application at their April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission meeting, and they recommend approval of the request to have the property zoned as community commercial. And it's just this little property here outlined in blue, but it's right behind the community commercial.
Ms. Wagner, just so I'm understanding this, so this would be a location for the community to have, like, social gatherings, or yard sales, or...
Yeah, you would rent space if you wanted to have a wedding reception, or a birthday party, or there's a metal building already there. One of the planning commissioners said years and years ago, it must have been a front shop, but it's zoned residential when he really can't do anything other than have a church there, or daycare, and that's all it's for.
This is Mr. Arthur Murphy's building, then, if I'm not mistaken, up any year.
Right, when the gentleman bought it, the building was there.
I know right where it is.
Okay.
That's right. Okay. Any other questions from council, Mr. Chairman?
I was looking up the useless locations, and it has a drinking place. What is that?
A drinking place? That is for like a bar or sports, you know, a sports club where they sell primarily alcohol and not food.
Now, they're going to have to be drinking there, aren't they?
Not that I know of. They didn't apply for that. They're not applying for any liquor licenses or anything. They wouldn't really be able to get that because it's too close to a school and a residence. So they're just applying to use it as a social hall. It would be like, um, you rented the Wagner Rent Branch Community, but it would be privately owned. It wouldn't be owned, you know, by the county.
So if they brought something to bring your own, like, they could use whatever that is available.
If you had a party, or a wedding reception, you could bring your own, but they won't be selling it or...
Okay, then the school is the earliest part in the community center, right? Is that school, they thought of that?
Yeah, Robertville Schools, right up here. Yes.
Ms. Wagner, any questions? Ms. Clark?
Uh-uh.
Okay, this time I'll call for a motion, please.
So move.
Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Kimberly Burgess, presentation, discussion, and consideration of first reading to provide for the levy of the tax for public purposes in Jasper County for the fiscal year beginning July first of twenty-three, continuing June thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty-four, and to make appropriations for said purposes to adopt and approve the Jasper County Capital and Operations Budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and to adopt and approve the Jasper County School District Capital and Operations Budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, to provide for the levy of taxation for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and matters there, too. Take your way.
So you have Mr. Fuldrum's memo. The budget as presented for the first reading is fifty-one million, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. County debt is two million, six hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred dollars. We had state mandated expenses, net of revenue, and state supplements equal to eleven million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars. The value of the mill is two hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-five, and this budget, the millage rate remains the same as the prior year at a hundred and forty, and thirty-one for cherry point. I don't know, I don't know what other details you'd like to hear about in the particular budget, but I do have the ordinance, and I did want to point out some changes that were made from the prior year's ordinance. Some of them are just minor. In section twelve, there's treasurer to sign the checks. We added the, the phrase, it says the Jasper County Treasurer, or the treasurer's designate. We added that, shall sign all general fund checks. That's basically in anticipation of the change in treasurer this year, and the, with the new treasurer coming in on July one. In section fourteen, we, the resolution was changed, and it references the latest approved subsistence schedule, which is, both of which are published in the Jasper County Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. So we don't spell it out in this ordinance. If it changes in the policy, this ordinance will follow that policy. And then, in section fifteen, the county property tax credit will be five million and seventy-seven dollars, which is a large, larger than most years. We actually, you see in the memo, we actually have a one point, let me make sure I have the right number, one point, two, one million, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and fourteen, local option sales tax credit carry forward. We've had a much greater local option sales tax revenue than, than was anticipated, therefore we got a larger credit. We did not include that in the tax bills, so we have to give that back to the taxpayers in this year's tax, in this fiscal year's tax bills.
That's great news.
It will be good for the taxpayers.
Well, I know we've got two months, we've got a set of some budget workshop dates, so we can go through that. Stay it before, I'm going to stay it again, I want to make sure that we're reducing the millage in this year's budget. That's a goal, certainly one I think is very good thing, if we need to make a statement. So hopefully that's something that we can work through and work on, and work on together, and provide a good budget that will sustain our county services and provide for what we need, but we need to look and see where we can reduce that millage. Any comments or projections, anybody?
I have to say, we increased the millage by one.
No, sir, it remains the same.
It was three forty-three, and then it was three forty-four. Let, yeah.
There's three...
Look at the budget, three forty-three.
Yeah, let me go to the, to the ordinance.
Maybe I'm mistaken.
It's three forty-four, which is the same as, well, that's the total millage, as far as school and school debt, and that's the same as last year's. That did not change.
We haven't heard from the school yet.
No, we have not.
Another question, and you have carryovers for the capital expense.
Yes.
What about regular expense and non-capital expense? Don't we have a carrier?
We do, we have those.
What bet?
Yes.
We have at least a million dollars, I would think.
Yes, we have, uh...
But that doesn't show up any much in revenue, does it?
No, it does not. It goes, it's in the cash carry forward. So it, it is in the revenue, but it's not, it's not included in the millage, in what the property tax is basically the fund balance essentially being used, carried forward.
Oh, I have a lot of other, those are the major ones I have.
Okay.
Mr. Anderson?
All right, so I'll just leave that. Okay. I just wanted to say, we want to see the budget, excuse me, we need to, we want to do the best that we can. Now, I don't want to see it go up.
It did not go up.
It's just a small piece.
Small piece.
But the actual part of it, the main part of it's there, but it has to have an apron so that you can, you know, have to put the vehicle on one part of it.
Is there any work, any official work orders on this? Or is this final?
No, sir. We're doing, we're doing, we're doing the inside. We're doing the inside and everything, so I don't anticipate any necessary.
No air conditioning, no heating or anything like that? That's included?
It's been it.
See?
It's been taken out.
Um, probably, I mean, there's not really any in the other shop currently. You know, probably put the same kind of heating system that's in here, which is just a standalone gas unit. They should probably work, most of it, the door is open.
You do have to understand that because we sit up here and multiple times you come to us, well, everybody comes to us and says, "We got to work with you, you got to work with you, you got to work with you." I just want to make sure that there's no more work orders.
Not anticipating, not anticipating anything that we can't handle within our current, current budget. If we put anything in there, it's probably just going to be one of the self-contained units that are not real expensive. Because he's probably just going, would actually probably just cool a small piece of it.
So you're going to tell me that there's not going to be any more work orders? You're not going to put any heat in there?
I'm not anticipating any, no, sir. I don't think any, I think anything we do, we can handle in our current budget.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
No, I don't have any question. I just want to say thank you all for the work that you're doing. And we have to trust the employees somewhere down the line to bring us the report. Because we are now out there and if we were really, really, really concerned, we would go out there and look at the phrase before we get on this bench and we would have our answers. That's why my pet peeve, I don't like that.
I don't see anything. My number's on there.
Uh, councilman?
Yes, sir.
I'm only asking these questions because other people want to answer them. I went after it, I saw it.
We're not going to do that.
I didn't answer them. So please don't make me doing that.
I'm not going to.
Any other questions from council members?
Okay, at this time, I'll call for a, do we have a motion?
I assume you do.
Second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. All right. Um, next we have Ms. Lisa Wagner, discussion and consideration of first reading to amend the official zoning map of Jasper County. So as to transfer a property located at 323 School Road bearing Jasper County tax map number zero one five dash zero one dash zero zero dash zero one two. From the residential zone to the community commercial zone, Jasper County official zoning map. Ms. Lisa Wagner.
Good evening, chairman and council members. The applicant requests a zoning map amendment to have the property designated as community commercial. The subject property consists of point seven four acres and is located at 323 School Road in the Robertville community. The subject property is currently zoned residential and has a commercial building located on the property. The applicant would like to have the property rezoned as community commercial so that the building can be used as a community event center. According to the 2018 Jasper County Comprehensive Plan, the future land use map identifies this area as a hamlet. Hamlets serve as commercial centers for everyday needs in rural areas. Small-scale commercials should be allowed within these hamlets with proper design. Adjacent parcels are zoned residential and community commercial with rural preservation nearby. Adjacent land uses are commercial, residential, and vacant property. The subject property is accessed by School Road, which is a county-maintained dirt road. Planning Commission reviewed this application at their April 11th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting, and they recommend approval of the request to have the property zoned as community commercial. And it's just this little property here outlined in blue, but it's right behind the community commercial.
Ms. Wagner, just so I understand this. So this would be a location for the community to have, like, social gatherings or yard sales or?
Yeah, you would rent space if you wanted to have a wedding reception or a birthday party or there's a metal building already there. One of the planning commissioners said years and years ago, it must have been a front shop. But it's zoned residential when he really can't do anything other than have a church there or take daycare and that's all.
This was Mr. Arthur Murphy's building then. I know if I'm not mistaken, up there.
Right, when the gentleman bought it, the building was there.
I know right where it is. Okay, that's right. Any other questions from council? Mr. Kim.
I just took you up the useless of those cars. And it has a drinking place. What is that?
A drinking place? That is for like a bar or sports, you know, a sports club where they sell primarily alcohol and not food.
Now, they're going to be drinking there, aren't they?
Not that I know of. They didn't apply for that. They're not applying for any liquor license or anything. They wouldn't really be able to get that because it's too close to a school and a residence. So they're just applying to use it as a social hall. It would be like you renting the Wagner Ranch community, but it would be privately owned. It wouldn't be owned, you know, by a county.
So if they brought somebody to bring your own liquor, they could use whatever that is.
If you had a party or a wedding reception, you could bring your own, but they won't be selling it or.
Okay, the school is the early start in the community center, right? Is that school being on that?
Yeah, Rockville Schools right up here. Yes.
Does that, any questions? Ms. Clark? Okay, at this time, I'll call for a motion, please.
So move second.
Any discussion of questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Kimberly Burgess, presentation, discussion, and consideration of first reading to provide for the levy of taxes for public purposes in Jasper County for fiscal year beginning July 1st of 2023 and beginning June 30th, 2024, and to make appropriations for said purposes to adopt and approve the Jasper County Capital and Operations Budget for fiscal year 2324 and to adopt and approve the Jasper County School District Capital and Operations Budget for fiscal year 2324 to provide for the levy of taxation for fiscal year 2324 and matters there, too. Take it away.
So you have Mr. Fulgham's memo. The budget as presented for the first reading is fifty-one million, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. County debt is two million, six hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred dollars. We had state mandated expenses that have revenue and state supplements equal to eleven million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars. The value of the mill is two hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-five, and this budget, the millage rate remains the same as the prior year at a hundred and forty. And thirty-one for cherry point. I don't know, I don't know what other details you'd like to hear about in the particular budget, but I do have the ordinance, and I did want to point out some changes that were made from the prior year's ordinance. Some of them are just minor. In section 12, there's treasurer to sign the checks. We added the, the phrase, it says, "The Jasper County Treasurer or the treasurer's designate." We added that, she'll sign all general fund checks. That's basically in anticipation of the change in treasurer this year and the, with the new treasurer coming in on July 1. In section 14, we, the resolution was changed and it references the latest approved subsistence schedule, which is, both of which are published in the Jasper County Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. So we don't spell it out in this ordinance. If it changes in the policy, this ordinance will follow that policy. And then in section 15, the county property tax credit will be five million and seventy-seven dollars, which is a large, larger than most years. We actually, you see in the memo, we actually have a one point, let me make sure I have the right number, one point two, one million, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and fourteen local option sales tax credit carry forward. We've had a much greater local option sales tax revenue than was anticipated, therefore, we got a larger credit. We did not include that in the tax bills, so we have to give that back to the taxpayers in this year's tax, in this fiscal year's tax bill.
That's great news.
It will be good for the taxpayers.
Well, I know we've got two months. We've got a set with some budget workshop dates, so we can get through that. Stayed at the fore, I'm going to stay again. I want to make sure that we're reducing the millage in this year's budget. That's a goal, certainly one I think is very important. We need to make a statement. So hopefully, that's something that we can work through and work on, and work on together and then provide a good budget that'll sustain our county services and provide for what we need. We need to look and see where we can reduce that millage. Any comments or projections, anybody?
I have. We increased the millage by one?
No, sir, it remains the same.
It was three forty-three and then?
Oh, I.
And then it was three forty-four. Wait.
There's three.
Look at the budget. Three forty-three.
Let me go to the, to the ordinance.
Maybe I'm mistaken.
It's three forty-four, which is the same as like, well, that's the total millage as far as school and school debt. And that's the same as last year's. That did not change.
We haven't heard from the school yet.
No, we have not.
Another question is, and you have carryovers for the capital expense.
Yes.
What about regular expense, non-capital expense? Don't we have to carry over?
We do, we have those.
Your profit?
Yes.
We have at least a billion dollars.
Yes.
I would think.
We have.
But that doesn't show up any much for revenue, does it?
No, it does not. It goes, it's in the cash carry forward. So it, it is in the revenue, but it's not, it's not included in the millage in what the property tax is basically the fund balance essentially being used carry forward.
I have a lot of this problem. Those are the bigger ones I have.
Okay.
Mr. Atkins?
All right, someone just did that.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to say we want to see the budget. Excuse me. We need to. We want to do the best thing we can. Now, I don't want to see it go up.
But did not go up. It stayed the same.
That's what I'm saying. I know, so we don't want to. I don't want our bills to fall out.
Okay, so at this time, we'll call for a motion for approval, please, for first reading.
So move second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have our.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we're also required to announce the public hearings of the budget.
Oh, yes, I'm following this.
And if we put that on there?
Yeah, it's required.
Which will be May fifteenth.
Okay, yeah. I didn't think it was tonight. Okay, yeah, May fifteenth will be our public hearing. Thank you. Okay, next, we have our public comments. We did have three people sign in. We all limited to three minutes per speaker. I think Kim or Lisa will be, maybe Tisha with the clock. First, we have Mr. Quincy Pitten, Land Subdivision.
Yes, sir. Are you coming?
Yes, sir, come on up front. Welcome.
Yes, sir. Are you on, Mr. Terry? Ms. Terry?
Okay.
My name's Quincy Bentley, recently retired military. About two years ago.
Thank you.
Thank you. About two years ago, I started planning my retirement and coming back home and preparing my retirement home, at which point I ran into all kinds of roadblocks. A law was put into place in 2018 basically limiting what we can do or how we can subdivide our property. And I couldn't even get surveyors out. I can't, I mean, it's ridiculous. I had a link taking me directly to that. I had a many link basically expired. So now I was able to find that previous link said that we could subdivide it four times, maximum of four, which with the parent piece being one of them. So you could only basically three people doing it. And those three people had to do it on the same day or everybody else would have to wait five years in order to subdivide it again. So I'm trying to find out, like, why, why is it making it so hard for people that own their lands to utilize their land? Because myself, I'm coming back home. I got three other cousins that are coming back home, and we're trying to utilize family land, and we're running into all kinds of roadblocks we can't even utilize. So the, this latest one that I found, I was just able to find this one. This is Jasper Code twenty point nine eight point one five zero, delay of parent track splits. It said, "Any parent track being split into twenty lots or less is subject to a five-year suspension of future subdivision." So if, if somebody does it tomorrow, that means that I come along and now I have to wait five years. And I'm trying to figure out why, why is it, why are we making it so difficult for people that own their lands to utilize their land?
Mr. Bentley, we don't usually respond during public comment for our ordinance, it's not, but I'm, I'm going to break the rule. I would suggest, and you may or may not have already done this, but get with Ms. Wagner, the planning department. I, I, this is not.
I got, I've been, I've been dealing with this for almost two years now. And I spoke with Ms. Wagner back in summer 2022 because the survey company wouldn't even deal with me. They said I have to go talk to the planning board before they would even talk to me. And just not understanding it.
Well, if you will, Mr. Fulgham, our county administrator, y'all can get together and try to find out what, if any, there is a way to resolve this and formulate a path forward. And that would be my recommendation.
Yes, sir.
Why you can't do this and leave it?
Yes, ma'am.
Thomas?
Yes, ma'am.
Let me just say you would give me your number before you leave, because I don't want to know how he's doing on.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Next, we have James Pringle.
Yes, sir. Evening, everybody. It's my first cousin that just spoke. And one of the reasons he's having to wait the five years is because I actually came home before him and I went through the process ironically in 2018 that's causing him to wait the five years before he can come home and build. So I'm just adding to what he's saying as far as how hard it is for us to get anything done on property that was left to us by our grandparents. And, you know, they always encouraged us to go out in the world, but find your way back home. And that's exactly what we're trying to do. And we're running into these situations where we're stuck in limbo because he can't bring, he can't come home and until he gets some of these things settled. So we're ironically doing the same thing the group that just left it. We want to preserve what we have. We want to keep what our grandparents left to it and our parents have given to us now. And it's, we follow all the rules. We keep up on the property taxes. Everything that we're required to do by law to preserve it just to find these ordinances that tell us, wait a minute, you can't do that. So we just really want to understand how this is all happening and we, and what else can we do but come and bring it to you to try to figure out how we can work in this situation.
Thank you, Mr. Pringle. Well, with our administrator and our planning director, Ms. Wagner, to give y'all any sort of policies to change or something that we might not be aware of, we can certainly look at that and try to make a path forward. Very good, thank you. Mr. and Ms. Hedy Frazier? Cusahatchie Community Center.
Again, good evening to everybody. This is the. This is, um, the plan, the four plans that the Head Start Director, Mr. James Williams, sent me. And so I'm giving it to you all, to everybody, so that everybody will have their own set and can look over it. Oh, and Mr. Falcone, for yours. And if you'd be so kind as to give this to Ms. Denmark, those are her plans. Then she works with the Department of Commerce. But anyway, we are excited about, you know, getting the four plans together. And one of the things that the community has been questioning me is when will you come before the community and set up a meeting so that we can discuss the rebuilding of the Cusahatchie Community Center and also the demolition of the Cusahatchie Fire Department? So they're, they're really, really want to get together with you in the planning stages to know what's going on so that they can have a full, hear a full report from you guys, explain to them what's going on and what are the procedures and all the myths and books and pieces that will go into getting these buildings up and running. So please get with us and you can get with Mr. Tony Gatsin and myself, Hedy Frazier. And you can get together and plan that date because we really need to see things set in motion and the community really want to be a part of it. They want to know what's going on. And so we all do. And we appreciate you agreeing to rebuild the community center.
Thank you, Ms. Frazier.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have our administrator's report. Mr. Andrew Fulgham.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I have some items just to report out to you. National Travel and Tourism Week, you saw that in my report. We're excited about that. Mr. Jenwright, our Clarkson Director, is going to be putting out some information on social media and in the press about the impact of that travel and tourism in Jasper County and statewide as well. Number two, I want to have, take the chance to embarrass Ms. Wagner, who's been working very hard in the revitalization effort just outside of Hardyville. And for multiple years now, you know that. And we need to give you an update at some point of all the work and grant money that's gone into that area. The removal of dilapidated structures, the construction of a new fire station. And this is the latest, is a one point eight million dollar grant to improve the drainage in that area. So she's been doing a prickly and job of getting money for us to improve that area. And again, she will be working with a gentleman that we have that does some PR for us to get that word out about all those projects over the last few years and what they are doing for that community. Reminder for the public that there is a public workshop at the county council this Friday in this room concerning exit three. So that will start at 9:00 AM. And that the council is currently going to be checking their calendars for a subsequent workshop on the airport. We'll announce when that is. And then lastly, I wanted to embarrass Ms. Williams, Ms. Tisha Williams, who is here in Ms. Simmons' stead tonight, running this meeting. And so I think that was above and beyond. She is doing that this evening for us, and she'll also be coordinating the meeting for us on Friday. So we thank her. That concludes my report unless you have any questions to me.
Any questions for Mr. Fulgham? Thank you, Mr. Fulgham.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this consent agenda.
We have a second?
Sir.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Council member comments, and Ms. Clark.
I'm just glad to be here. I'm feeling better each time. Feel better than I was going through a period of sickness there. But I feel pretty good. I attended the Alliance Board Meeting. As you know, I served on that board as an advisory, on the advisory committee. So I took it back. I attended the EOC training in Myrtle Beach. I attended the, what's going on? Did you hear that?
Chamber, Chamber.
The Chamber. Awards banquet. Had some great awards. I'm coming out there, I'm on somebody. Well, you got a deputy back there. Tell him, here. He can't even want to cry when they're taking a picture. He's the sheriff. He got a stash throw of. And I also attended El Call. That's another one of the boards I served on, I attended that meeting. And probably some other things. I can't remember all that stuff. I'm getting up in age now, Marty. So. And oh, yeah, I want to wish my daughter, who just left, a happy birthday. I want to wish my sister a happy birthday. I want to wish my nephew a happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
May birth.
It's a big day.
Big day.
Councilman Kim.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. I attended the monthly administrator's meeting in an effort to get closer to them and see if we can do anything with the leadership and see what their problems are. Get together, they had a few problems. I asked the sheriff to look into it so he could help out. I went to Soloco. The new effort's going to be on zoning and getting the zoning between the entities to the local. I attended the SCA, SCA Board Meeting. Very informative where our money's going, what we need for the future. And they're going to stress workforce training. I attended the Bureau of Jasper Water and Service Authority. As usual, nothing really went on there. They are looking at the current location that is, is on its track. And that's going to add fifteen million gallons, I guess it was. Another fifteen million gallons is going to come on after that. So they're trying to catch up on there. I attended Jasper On The Move. I congratulate Sheriff Hip, especially for being here, sheriff, for two years and how far we've come with the sheriff's department. I met his family. And I told him, "Don't trust me. And you agree with me." But then I had something else. The sheriff always throws me under the bus. Anyway, and I attended the United Alliance Annual Meeting. They're going to be a force to rep in Jasper County, and I stress Jasper County from now on. Thank you, and I hope you have prayers for Floyd. He's sick and he needs all the prayers going down. Thank you.
Mr. Atkins?
Everybody be blessed.
Can I say this one before you start? Give it, Rick.
What she think of it just like that? You just said you were getting old, Barbara. Barbara had something to say, but she just forgot it. If you think of it, just. Councilman Garbait is not with us this evening. I'm sure everybody realizes that. He is going through some pretty serious heart procedures. So please keep him in your prayers. He needs all of your prayers. His wife is taking her chemo treatments as well. So they're both, they have a lot of challenges right now. So just keep this family in your prayers, please. I was, attended the Southern Carolina Alliance Meeting, the Jasper On The Move with our Chamber Awards Banquet. I've had several meetings with some of the people that were here tonight presenting for the Broad River effort as well. So it's been quite busy. But just want to thank everybody for being here, for your support. And the gentleman that spoke tonight, there may be, as a result of y'all's challenges, some policy changes possibly, I don't know. But, but please get with our administrator and Lisa. And they will do everything they can to take down your information and see what options, if any, are available and try to welcome you guys home. So thank you for your service, protecting, and we appreciate that very much, very much. Thanks for coming back to Jasper County. You always get called back home. Barbara, did you think of what it was? We'll save it the next year. Okay, well, I guess at this time, we'll call for a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, stand up. Got the last one, good night.